Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight to the Planning Commission meeting for the City of Placerville. I would like to begin tonight with, if you'd join me, in a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chair Wolf.
Here.
Vice Chair Roby.
Here.
Member Friend.
Here.
Member List.
Here.
Member Lowery.
Here.
Thank you. Our -- welcome, everybody. And tonight's first item is the consent calendar, including the agenda and the minutes. Are there any comments or anything that needs to be pulled? No? Okay. Then I'll assume by consensus the consent calendar is approved. Now we come to the portion of the meeting, the first part of the meeting here, which is regarding public comment on items of interest that may be of interest to the public and the commission. And this is regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. We can't take action on anything that's brought up in the public comment section, but this is your opportunity to communicate with us. And we typically like to limit that time to three minutes. If anybody wishes from the public wishes to address the commission, this is your opportunity.
Happy New Year. Just a request on future items. Files that are online to view be broken down in manageable pieces because certain items are so large, they take so long to download and manage. So just a request to break things out. That's all.
Thank you. I think staff is hearing that. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the portion where we consider any new written communications to the commission.
Tonight you have before you an additional communication regarding item 5.1 on tonight's agenda.
We do? That's this. That's this. Okay. So I just have a point of clarification. So this is -- was prepared by staff, and it's the revisions to the conditions of approval that were already included, were previously included in our staff report.
Staff passed out two separate documents relating to 5.1. The first was briefly described by Mr. Painter. It was comments that we received today from friends of historic Hangtown commenting on the project. And then we also provided you with its date at this date, and it's the revised conditions of approval for the project to be considered under 5.1. All the changes are shown as underline and strikeout, and I'll go over those as part of my staff presentation.
Okay. I think with some embarrassment, I'm the one that didn't get one. I didn't get the correspondence. I got the revised conditions. Thank you. I sit corrected. Okay. We'll go ahead. So that was it on communications?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to the public hearings part of the meeting. Item 5.1, the site plan review 16-02 and an accompanying variance for a 112-room hotel, a Hampton Inn and Suites, including meeting facilities, guest dining, parking, landscaping, and miscellaneous roadway improvements, and a variance request to allow an average building height of 55 feet in lieu of 40 feet in a highway commercial zone. So I guess we'll begin with the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This request comprises three components. The first component is consideration under site plan review, a 70,600-square-foot, four-story, 112-room hotel with several, with two meeting rooms totaling 2,700 square feet, an indoor pool, guest dining area, fitness facilities, and 135 parking spaces in the parking lot area. Two, the request includes a variance request to allow for an average building height of 55 feet in lieu of 40 feet, which is the maximum height currently allowed in the highway commercial zone district. And then three, completion of the Jakeway Road improvements to include safety railing, widening bike lanes, a median turn lane, and sidewalk along the site frontage and easterly to Smith Flat Road. So I'll start with a little background of this project. Back in 1986, the city approved a restaurant and a 100-unit motel on a portion of the subject site. Both the hotel and the entitlements for that project expired. And then in 1988, the city council granted approval for the, what was called the Anderson Split pea soup development plan, which was a 104-unit motel, a restaurant, coffee shop, banquet facilities, lounge, retail area, gas station, mini-mart on the subject site. These approvals have since expired. Then in 1995, the Anderson pea soup project was resubmitted under a different name and design and was subsequently rejected by staff for various design conflicts. And then in 1997, another project known as the North Point Travel Center was submitted. That included a 108-unit motel with restaurant, lounge, meeting room facilities, a gas station, convenience store, car wash, 15,000-square-foot retail commercial building. And this project was approved by the Planning Commission, but this development has also since expired. Then in 2004, the city council conditionally approved a 102-room hotel known as the Gateway Hotel. That was the Holiday Inn Express on the subject site. The environmental document, which was a mitigated negative declaration that was adopted, was successfully challenged by a group known as Save Our Neighborhood. A settlement agreement then followed several years later, and then construction on the hotel and the road commenced. The road improvements that are currently in place are considered interim improvements. The subject site has all of the necessary land entitlements and building plan approvals that would allow for the construction of a hotel of up to 117 rooms without any further discretionary approvals. The subject Hampton Inn and Suites hotel project proposes certain major building elevation design and site plan modifications from that that was approved for the Holiday Inn Express. Therefore, the Planning Commission authorization is required, and this is subject of this hearing, and also the variance request for allowing for a height of 55 feet average. So the subject site is located at 3001 Jakeway Road, which is at the northeast corner of Point View Drive and Highway 50. The approximately three-acre site is currently vacant with partial development, which was suspended construction of the formerly approved 117-room Holiday Inn Express. The site is completely graded with the exception of approximately seven-tenths of an acre, which is in natural landscape located southeast of the existing partially completed retaining wall. The site contains partially constructed foundation, underground utilities, and a temporary detention basin from the previous hotel that will be removed should the Hampton Inn hotel project move forward. With respect to the site plan review, which is considering the building elevations and site design, the exterior design of the proposed hotel may be described as a modified corporate architecture. In contrast to the nearest Hampton Inn and Suites that is located in East Bidwell and Folsom, the proposed building elevations incorporate design components that enhance local design compatibility elements, which also complement the overall building mass. These elements include extensive use of stone, building facade variations, variable roofline forms, exposed timber enhanced roof, entry dormers, horizontal siding treatments, and the roof material is simulated wood composite material. The main entrance to the proposed hotel has an inward orientation rather than a street frontage orientation. While this would generally be considered contrary to the city's design criteria, the site designers indicated that they explored many alternatives, and they offered the following to allow for the change in building orientation away from Jakeway Road frontage. The proposed building orientation was the most desirable and efficient location considering the site's long and narrow nature. Due to the bend in the side along the southeast edge pushing the building up to this edge, opposite of where it is now, would result in unusable space at this bend. Consequently, this would result in fewer parking spaces than are currently shown on the site plan. The current orientation allows for a number of parking spaces to be maximized, and the back, which is the north elevation, has been designed to mimic a front elevation. This ensures that the view of the hotel from Jakeway Road imparts the same level of design treatments as the front elevation. Staff has discussed this issue and the lack of pedestrian access from the lobby to directly to the street at the north street elevation with the applicant's agent. And although staff is of the opinion that a defined entrance to the north street elevation accessing the lobby is appropriate for improved pedestrian access, the interior architectural design constraints do limit the feasibility of providing an entrance directly on the Jakeway on the north elevation of the hotel building, and therefore is recommending deletion of condition 4A14. And that is shown in your revised conditions of approval as a strikeout. And the entrance exit door is provided, however, off of the meeting room at the north elevation. However, there are access points at both east and west elevations within close proximity to the street sidewalk. The applicant has committed to incorporating a window and other treatments and material that would further enhance the north elevation. With respect to parking, an analysis of the proposed and required parking for each project is shown below, and there is a table that's contained in your staff report. The proposed parking for the 112-room hotel is at 135. The required parking per city code is 112. And the ITE parking standards, which are most current, are only recommending 100. With respect to signage, there are three wall signs that are proposed individually illuminated, pan channel lettering. Two ground monument signs are internally illuminated with opaque background. It's staff's opinion that the proposed wall signs are appropriate with respect to the context and scale of the hotel elevations and each proposed location. The proposed ground monument sign at each driveway are considered pole signs by city code as defined and require approval of a conditional use permit. Therefore, as proposed, are currently unpermitted unless they were approved through a conditional use permit. Pole signs are typically permitted in only those circumstances to attract the highway-oriented customer. These signs do not currently satisfy that intent. It is, in this regard, staff recommends that the sign at the west entrance be modified to comply with city code ground sign criteria and not exceed 32 square feet and eight feet in height, which will also be more appropriate in scale for the purpose it serves. As for the proposed sign at the east driveway, it appears more appropriate that a smaller corporate directional sign be utilized, not exceeding 10 square feet. A condition of approval is included to address the ground sign. The hotel use is self-evident, meaning that it's clear what it is when you're driving by it on Jakeway Road, and therefore is not necessary to oversign the hotel use. Travelers on Jakeway will not be confused that the building is a Hampton Inn hotel. With regard to the exterior lighting proposed, the exterior lighting for the hotel is generally consistent of three types of lighting, which includes under-canopy lighting, wall-mounted fixture, wall pack on the north, which is the street elevation, and 25-foot-tall parking lot fixtures. The specifications of each fixture are shown in Sheet E double odd two in your staff report. Staff has reviewed the exterior lighting plan and accompanying photometric analysis and has concluded the proposed exterior lighting does comply with the prescriptive criteria set forth in code in terms of complying with meeting light trespass on adjoining property lines and meeting the minimum light levels for walkways and parking area and the pole light height standards. Staff does note that the wall pack lighting on the north elevation is considered architecturally inappropriate and should be substituted with a decorative feature that is shown on E double odd two as an option two. A condition of approval to this issue has been incorporated in the conditions of approval. With regards to landscaping, a preliminary landscaping plan accompanied the application. Staff has reviewed that plan and has concluded that the plan substantially conforms to the city's current landscape criteria. More specifically, staff finds that the street tree variety and spacing is met, the type of and spacing of the parking lot trees is substantially met, and the type of ground cover and shrubs proposed is met and extended via the use of rock and boulders, and the landscaping is drought tolerant and low in water use. Lastly, the 50% minimum threshold for parking lot shading is 15 years, at 15 years, is exceeded. The proposed landscaping around the Portica share and is more decorative in nature. There are areas within the preliminary landscaping plan that staff found was deficient in detail that must be addressed in the final plan submittal. First, there are several areas in the parking area that do not meet the threshold for planners at 10 stall intervals. Secondly, the ground, the location of ground-mounted electromagnetic electro-mechanical equipment that supports ground floor services is not shown on the plan. Most equipment will be placed in the western half of the hotel, given the floor plan. A reconnaissance of the Folsom Hotel confirmed this issue. A condition of approval has been included that addresses this issue that requires a combination of physical and landscape screening subject to staff approval. With respect to the variance request, the proposed hotel exceeds the maximum building height of 40 feet within a highway commercial zone. The city code defines building height as the vertical distance between finished grade to the average height of the highest roof surface. Staff calculated the average roof height is about 55 feet. In accordance with state planning laws, when evaluating a variance request, the commission must consider if there are specific circumstances that distinguish the project site from its surroundings and that these circumstances would create an unnecessary hardship for the applicant if the usual zoning standards were imposed. A variance request must also not adversely affect the general plan. Staff believes that the commission can make the necessary findings to support the granting of a variance for the building height, and these include the following. The site is narrow and rectangular in shape, which constrains the site development and the opportunity to develop the site. Two, the site was required to dedicate land and the Jakeway Road extension in accordance with the general plan, master circulation plan. This land dedication significantly limited the site design options and did contribute to the irregular shape of the site. Three, a portion of the south side of the site possesses steep topography, which by its very nature must remain in an underdeveloped natural state. And then four, development of the site is physically challenged due to the extensive topographic elevation change between Highway 50 to the south and Smith Flat Road to the north. And then lastly, while a flat roof on the proposed hotel would still require a variance of approximately three feet, it is determined a flat roof would not only create an architecturally disfavorable appearance on the site and the surrounding area in contrast to the city's design criteria, but a flat roof would also limit the ability to conceal unsightly rooftop mechanical equipment and help attenuate noise. Based upon the above circumstances and site issues, it's staff's opinion that the granting of a variance would actually create more of a consistent project with the general plan and development guide than not. With regard to the environmental document proposed, staff is relying on a previously prepared mitigated negative declaration and addendum to the same for the Holiday Inn Express hotel project. The proposed hotel is well within the scope of the Holiday Inn Express project. The site is already graded with utilities and foundation already constructed, and the Jakeway Road extension has already been completed. There would be no new impacts associated with a change in hotel brand or the modifications to the elevations and site plan as requested. I just want to call to your attention that we did receive, staff did receive, some comments from friends of historic Hangtown. We received those today. Staff only briefly reviewed these. A lot of the comments had to do with the transit occupancy tax and other financial considerations of the project, which are not germane to what's before you, but you're free to look at those comments and ask staff or the applicant questions regarding those Staff also provide you a list of revised conditions for the Hampton Inn and Suites dated this date. If you would look at those real quickly, it's just some minor changes, but I can go through them on page, on the first page. Staff has highlighted these changes, and we've essentially deleted, as I described earlier in the staff report, 4A14, and that was the requirement to have pedestrian access from the lobby to Jakeway Road. We deleted that condition. Moving on to page four, up at the top, condition 15. We've modified the condition to read, "A grease interceptor system may be required for the new sewer system leaving all kitchen and food prep areas. Location, type, and installation shall meet city and EID standards or as directed by the city engineer. The determination for a grease interceptor shall be determined during plan check." We made those changes because it's not known yet whether the city will require a grease trap, and that's something that we can determine at the time of building's submittal. Staff did do a review, and we walked the Hampton Inn in the City of Folsom. We talked with the staff at the Hampton Inn in Folsom, and the way the food situation works there is it's all, it's all pre-cooked and then brought in the site and warmed up. So there may not be the actual cooking on site that would necessitate a grease trap, but that would be yet to be determined. So this change in that condition gives us that flexibility. Moving on to page seven, condition number 36. We just made a, just a minor change in the middle of that condition where we state that the wall is required to be certified by Young Doll Consulting Group, Inc. We basically changed it to state that the wall is required to be certified by a registered structural engineer, that it was constructed in accordance with the plans and requirements and meets their approval. Otherwise, an analysis of the existing structure shall be included. Required geotechnical report is discussed under grading below. We don't know whether or not Young Doll Consulting will actually perform the work, so we just gave flexibility that it doesn't necessarily have to be that particular consulting Moving on to condition of approval, the last page, page 11. All we did was cross out the B and put condition number 57. No change to that condition. So with that, staff is making a recommendation that you adopt the findings contained within the staff report, approve site plan review 1602, authorizing construction of 112-room hotel known as a Hampton Inn and Suites, and adopt the findings and approve variance 1601 for the building height, allowing for a maximum average height of 55 feet. And with that, that will conclude staff's presentation. We do have the applicant's agent. We have the applicant's engineer, and I believe, in fact, we have the applicant here as well, but we have their agents, the engineer, and I think we have the applicant's architect. I may be wrong on that, but they're here to give a PowerPoint presentation as well, and we're set up to do so. But with that, if you want, if staff can answer any questions you have, or if you want to go right into the applicant's presentation, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
Will parking be allowed along Jakeway Road on the street?
Currently, parking would not be allowed along the street frontage along Jakeway.
Okay.
Anyone else for staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good report, Pierre. Thank you very much. The last time a project on this site was approved, there was a gas station as well. Has that approval expired, or is it still possible for a gas station to be located on the property, or is the construction as planned preclude? I know that the report didn't talk about it. They're not applying for one, but is there the possibility of at some point adding a fueling station?
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm not, I'm not sure if that, if that application is actually expired or not, but it's not the, the gas station, the convenience door, the car wash.
Yeah.
Are not a part of this application.
Yeah, that I, that I know. That was more of a curiosity than anything else, and maybe the applicant can speak to whether, given how the project's going to be laid out, if there's a possibility for that in the future. I'm not arguing for one. I'm just curious. Will it be possible for, on Highway 50 in coordination with Caltrans, there's some discussion in the staff report about coordinating with Caltrans in terms of the street name signage, Point View and Jakeway. Will it be also, would, would it be possible for staff to work with Caltrans to pursue the blue signage, both westbound and eastbound, that indicate lodging, to let people know since we don't have the, we don't have the billboards generally on the highway to advertise, and this would give people a heads up, there's something new that they could take advantage of? Is that something the city could work with Caltrans to obtain?
Staff will be working with Caltrans in terms of trying to improve upon the identification of the exit, much like when you're traveling eastbound on Highway 50 and you approach the Placerville-Forney Road exit. We would like to see at least, you know, city staff would like to see Caltrans modify the sign to identify that as both, not just Point View Drive, which is a, mainly a collector road for a residential area, but also show it as off-ramp for Jakeway, which is an arterial to carry traffic from both Highway 50 Broadway to Carson and to the Apple Hill area. So we'll be working with them to see what avenues we would take in order to have that sign changed. As far as a Caltrans, or staff working with Caltrans for the blue sign that says lodging, at least I'm not sure. Maybe our city engineer can answer that, but I think that's something that the applicant would work with Caltrans to have installed, but maybe.
I've seen it done. Hi. Good evening, Rebecca.
I hate that.
Sorry. Yes, it's, I've seen it done both ways. The applicant has worked with Caltrans in the past and as well as the city assisting in that level of coordination, and that's not a problem. We're happy to do that.
Great. And Pierre, going back to the, going back to the highway signage, Jakeway, we could also possibly include to Apple Hill or Apple Hill traffic, because that is certainly a way you'd want to direct, I think, folks to the Apple Hill area would be using the Jakeway Road, I would think, right?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So that could, that would just suggest that be part of the signage. Interesting discussion in the staff report regarding the history of the MND and the addendum and the court rulings and all of that. I was left a little bit unclear as to whether or not the MND is on or off the table. I'm assuming it's kind of off the table. It's a done document. We just simply accept it as, as it exists. Is that true?
Yes. Let me try and explain that. Basically, the, the environmental document for this project would be the previously prepared mitigated negative deck and the addendum that was done on that mitigated negative deck. So there was an original document that was done for the North Point Center, and then when the Holiday Inn Express was approved by the city, it was an addendum. And so we're just using that. And so we're just using that same environmental document that was prepared and adopted for that project is the appropriate environmental document for this project, mainly being, this project is only basically being revised, building elevations. All the impacts have been already realized because the site is graded, the hotel was already, was started to construct. A lot of the environmental impacts were due to the Jakeway extension. That extension has already occurred. So this project would be subject to basically completing any of the outstanding mitigation measures that were paired under that environmental document.
Everybody else?
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item, and what I'd like to do is we'll go ahead and hear from the owner and the agent and possibly the architect. I understand we have a presentation. Then we'll, the commission may have some questions, and I'd like you, let us go first because we might answer a lot of people's issues in asking those questions while we have the agent and the owner. And then we'll allow a public comment, no matter which direction it's going on the project, and we'd like you to, kind of counting people, if we could limit those comments to three or four minutes, whether you're an opponent or a proponent of the project, and then we'll finish up with, the owner gets a, gets a final chance for us to ask questions and make some final comments. And then we'll kind of close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action. And the, I've been chastised duly many times for reopening the public hearing for additional questions and that sort of thing, but I don't intend to do that tonight. So I'd like to welcome the owner and the applicant to go ahead and give us your, give us your presentation. Please let us know who's speaking.
Great. Unfortunately, I'm the engineer, not the architect, so you get to listen to the engineer speak. My name is Blake Johnson. I'm with GHD, we're the civil engineers for this project. I guess who's going to switch the next slide? Thank you. Anyway, we're great, you know, thankful to be here, and this is for the Placerville Hampton Inn Suites. Wanted to introduce the team here. First of all, do want to thank the city of Placerville, the planning and engineering departments for working with us, helping us through the process. It's been great working with them. Lot of helpful insight, recommendations for this project, so we greatly appreciate their, their assistance. The development team, starting off with the Wasatch Growth Partners, Brad Whitaker, who's in the audience today. Then we've got Apple Hill Hospitality, Michael, Richard, and Alan Brown are here today. The architect is Tag. They're out of Denver, so we've got Jim Allred, Amy Deary, and Brian Rice. And the civil engineer, of course, on this is GHD, myself, and Tom Ballbeers have been working on this project. As we had discussed, or Mr. Rivas has discussed, the existing site, so I believe two thousand seven, two thousand eight, the project started. Pictures are a little dark, I apologize. You can see the concrete pad foundation that has been poured in the picture on the left-hand side, and unfortunately, has been, I'll call it abandoned, was not completed. Some utilities are on-site from fire hydrants to water. Nothing has been approved at this point, but we do have some utilities on-site as we speak. The photo on the right is Jakeway Road. Fortunately, you can't see the improved road that well. The retaining wall is on the north side, or in that picture on the right-hand side. It's been, for the most part, completed, other than the safety barrier on top of that As part of the design process, we looked at different construction techniques and have decided on this modular construction. These particular photos are taken from a site at the courtyard in Washington State. These modular buildings are constructed by Girdon Industries in Boise, Idaho. I did put the website on there, gearedinmodulable buildings dot com. They have a great video of the construction activities in their Idaho plant, and then truck them out to the sites. I can go to the next photo. Just more photos of, of these modular buildings going in. They actually built the modular facility. The Fairfield Inn in Folsom was modular. There's also a courtyard in San Jose that is modular. Main reason for that, for the modular, is timing, trying to get these constructed and, and the hotel open in a, in a timely manner. So this here, getting into the elevation of the hotel and materials, I mean, didn't memorize it, so I'm going to have to read this part, and I can't see that far, so bear with me. Basically, in keeping with the surrounding Sierra community, the Placerville Hampton Inn and Suites has incorporated a mountain aesthetic to its exterior facades. The prototypical Hampton Inn and Suite exterior have been modified in compliance with the city of Placerville's request to include natural and textured building materials that are typical of a mountain vernacular. The stone-based stucco siding at the top floor and the heavy timber trusses at the gabled roofs and the portico chair combine to create visual features that easily identify the hotel with its mountainous surroundings. The first floor contains a mix of hotel rooms and public space. Public space includes meeting space, fitness room, indoor pool and pool deck, and then outdoor deck. Hotel also includes a double-height breakfast area. The second through fourth floors are comprised of the guest rooms. So of course, here's the elevation. You're looking at the, the top photo is the south elevation. The middle-left is the east elevation, the middle-right, west elevation, and the bottom is the north elevation. And of course, the large-scale printout is, is right behind you there. Here are the stone and the color palette that has been chosen for this particular Hampton's Inn. Again, trying to stay with that mountainous theme, these colors have been chosen for this particular site. Site plan and landscape architect, I think staff had mentioned Jakeway Road improvements, median, bike lanes, bus stop, wasn't included, but, and utilities in, on this set of plans. The landscape also had been mentioned, but we're looking at eastern, redbud trees, crepe myrtles, pines, black oak, California lilac, manzanita, sagebrush, coyote brush, buckwheat, so a lot of plants you'll see in the surrounding area. This here is a photo of the, or image of the landscape plan. Too bad we don't have it in color, but you can see the, the circular figures, that's all the tree plantings on-site in the parking and so on, so again, trying to give it that nice, natural look for, for this facility. Here is the, the site civil plan. The, the top image is the cross-section of Jakeway Road. You'll see the retaining wall that was built, the keystone wall that was built. On top of that is the safety structure that would, that needs to be constructed. Currently, it's K-rail that's sitting out there today, so the new structure will be designed. Again, bike path, turn median, and, and so on with, with this layout. Anyway, very excited to become part of the community. Again, thank you very much for having us up here. And with that, any questions from the commission?
Thank you. Questions?
What, we looked at the modular construction of the building. Roughly, what percentage of the facility will be built off-site and brought in and, let's just call it bolted together with the other modules? And what, obviously, what percentage would be constructed through local contractors?
Brad Whitaker, Wasatch Growth Partners, happy to be with you tonight. The top three floors will be modular, so two through four. The first floor is built, is stick-built on-site, and the skin and the roof are built on-site as well, so the, those portions will be built by our contractor, and the girdon pieces are the modular pieces. They hook together, there's a system, you can go under the website and look at their system, but it's, it's very stout construction. They have to truck them here, basically, from Boise, and they're, in fact, when we went, when we decided to go with modular, we had to change the site plan because of the building ends up longer because the walls are so thick. So it's a very stout, very soundproof, very well-constructed piece. I don't know if I answered a question, but, but three-fourths of it.
So roughly, obviously, three-fourths of the, the structure itself?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
As I look at your, your elevations, they seem to be placed on a very flat piece of property. After walking the property yesterday, either you're going to be putting in some pretty good fill, or you're going to be digging out a lot of dirt, yet these plans don't represent that.
Well, there will be some site work that'll have to be done, certainly. So it's, it's not a flat site.
But your plan says it is. That's, that's my point. What, what we're seeing is not what we're getting, is my point. If you look at the road, you look at your site, there's a difference between what is there and what I'm seeing here, and that bothers you.
Yeah, I think, Blake Johnson here, I think the, the elevations, that's, I'll call that the pretty picture, the color image. If you go to the site civil plans, you'll see the grades more clearly, that it's still, the building itself is on a flat pad, and it's a combination of cut and fill for a flat pad, but it still grades from the west to the east, so it follows kind of the same grade as the roadway, but we'll have to build up the pad to make the pad flat.
See, my point is Joe Citizen sitting over here that isn't excited about this, thinks they're getting that, and then they're going to have a building that's up higher because of fill than actually we're seeing. That, that's my point, okay? That, that I would like to see when it comes before the planning commission, that we see an elevation that reflects what the site plan says, and we're not seeing that, okay? I had a question about the north side. You call, on your plan, you call for quite an extensive ADA ramp. Now I understand that that's not going to be built, is that correct?
On the north side?
On the north side, yes. On site plan C four dash two.
I'd have to go back and look at that.
You're talking about the bottom elevation?
Yeah.
Yeah, coming up Jakeway.
I don't think we had, no, we didn't have a handicap ramp. I don't think there is a.
It's on your plan.
Handicap ramp there. There's not, there's not an exit there, so there'd be no way to access it. There may be a, there may be a walkway there. I have to look again and see what we submitted, but I, there's no plan for an exit there.
Okay, once again, on the site plan, it shows one thing, we get to the elevation and it shows something else. Once again, Joe Public sees it.
Sure, yeah, right.
They're not seeing the true story. One or the others, you know, if, if you flattened out the whole property, then you don't need that. Then it should have been removed from the site plan.
Right, there, you know, I'd have to ask Rebecca what version we submitted, but there's not, there's not a plan for egress right there in the center of the, of the building, so there wouldn't be a handicap ramp there.
All right.
No, I may, I may comment, if I could, on what Pierre mentioned earlier, and that is, we probably will do something out there regardless. We'll do a sitting area or something that is accessed from that door that comes out of the conference rooms, so that there's a little, just a place to meander rather than be in the hotel. And we'll put some sort of architectural treatment that, you know, the city obviously will approve and embrace, but that's what's being planned for there right now.
Okay. And final question, besides that, I didn't see anything dealing with solar panels either on the building or parking lot. Is that not part of your plan at this point?
No, it's not. We've investigated that, and the elevations just don't allow us to do that. So we've, that's, that's not part of the plan right now. We wish it was.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for bringing us to commission this evening. A couple of quick questions. Following along with the discussion of elevations as we reasonably anticipate them to look after build-out, and I do think that's really important. I think Commissioner List is talking about the Jakeway roadside.
Sure.
We don't have any elevations from the Highway fifty side, and, do we? No, no, we don't, we don't, I don't believe we have, and I, I don't remember seeing an elevation of what I plan to see as I'm coming down Highway fifty?
You should have, you should have that elevation right there. That sheen of elevation.
But as I'm coming down the highway, we have a project off of Fornie Road down the way here, and we made, we made a lot of requirements for showing photographically, image, image-wise, how that project would look from the highway, I think over Weber Creek. And, and Highway fifty is, is a scenic highway, right? So it's, it's pretty important. I don't have any understanding right now as to the relation between the, the roof line, and I'm, unfortunately, I'm glad the solar panels aren't going to go up there, because I, I think, as great utility they are, I think visually, it would really detract. But I, I don't believe that these represent what I'm going to see in my automobile traveling westbound on Highway fifty coming down to, to that location. I drove it yesterday or the day before and tried to visualize this, but I, I didn't see it. I don't know if staff can provide an elucidation or the other commissioners, but do you have anything that would give some, a visual relationship between the motorists coming down the highway and, and what they're actually going to see in terms of, of the hotel?
No, not, we, we haven't done that specifically. It wasn't requested of us before this, but if that's critical, we could, as part of the post, you know, approval process, we could provide something that you're looking for.
And I don't remember what the MND required, because we don't, I don't think we had the MND right as part of our, our packet, and I don't remember what the, the visual aesthetic component of the Mackey Hotel was for that.
The environmental document is contained in your package. You got the entire MND.
And the addendum. Okay. I didn't see that today, so, all right. Is there a kitchen in the facility?
The, the food that's prepared is, is a, what we call continental breakfast. Most of it's prepackaged and warmed.
Okay.
So there's no, it's, there's no kitchen per se, but we do prepare food in the morning.
Okay. You may have heard my question earlier about the gas station after this is built out, and I don't know if you know about the history of the, of the parcel and the proposed gas station.
I do.
Convenience store. After your project is completed, does it leave room for the gas station convenience store?
Be no reason why there wouldn't be. There's separate parcels, and I think the original developer had planned to put them on those two separate parcels, so.
Right, okay.
In all likelihood, it would be, whatever's planned for there could be put in there.
Okay. And I do, I really like the use of the pines and the oaks as part of your landscaping. I do think that really does help soften the architectural component and just tie it in with the, with the, with the local landscaping. All right, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
So with regard to, to, I guess what we'd call the view shed of the building from Highway fifty, you know, looking at the bottom of the drawing, the highest elevation I see here is twenty-two fifty-five, and then it goes on up there, and, you know, can we postulate that it's twenty-two hundred and sixty feet at the pavement level on Highway fifty? And then I see elevation lines of, call it twenty-two hundred and twenty-five feet, so... And then I see elevation lines of, call it 2225 feet, so. At least that, yeah.
You see the top half of the building?
Right, right. So you wouldn't, but, my point is, is you wouldn't see all four stories standing tall as you looked over at the, as you drove past the hotel, you'd see the, the top two stories of the hotel, so. The, the visual impact, I think, is modified somewhat by the fact that, basically, the hotel sits in a hole, you know, relative to Highway 50.
The trees will block some of that too, unfortunately. You know, from our perspective, we've, we love it to be seen, but it's.
Right.
I have a question about the, obviously, the variance request for the height is of, of some interest. And I was curious if the pitched roofs, will that end up being, you know, typically, there would be HVAC equipment up there, but is that also part of your distribution system?
Distribution for HVAC?
For the HVAC?
No, that's contained inside the building.
So it goes inside these modular units? Alright, thank you. Alright, anything else in summary from the agent? You guys will get another chance at the other end of this.
No, we're just happy to answer questions, if you want us to.
Alright, so what I'd like to do now, thank you, and we'll let the public comment. The, so at this, this time, it's sort of, just kind of got to get lined for the, the podium, and please limit your comments to three or four minutes. And if, if you're just going to repeat what the person said before you, we get it, just tell us that, that saves everybody a lot of trouble. So the podium is the public's.
I, I do have one request. I don't want to prevent people from talking about anything they want to talk about there, this, at least tangentially related to this project, but there are certain elements that are out of scope for this discussion.
Sure, good point.
Like the transient occupancy tax, economic development or economic impact.
Good comments. So just to tag on to that a little bit, our job here is to assist the city council in, in interpreting and enforcing the zoning ordinance, like, period, unfortunately. Although we don't do this in a vacuum, we know that there's many other aspects to the community, but our interest is in the, is in the built environment. So, public time.
Good evening, Commissioner Michael Drobish Placerville. I do support this hotel and this location, I just want to make sure that all impacts are mitigated to a less-than-significant level. And one new thing I heard tonight was placing a sign on Highway 50 directing traffic to Apple Hill up Jakeway. But then you're creating new unstudied traffic impacts, you don't know that those local small roads and signage can handle. I looked back and it, it was calling for 2015, year 2015, 579 vehicles to be accessing Jakeway to Apple Hill. So just be careful what you wish for, but if you want to, do put that in as a new condition, you really need to mitigate it. So how would you do that? I can show the nexus between the TOT and this, because in Steve Calfee's original mitigated neg, negative declaration, he spelled out TOT, transient occupancy taxes, to be part of the mitigation. Basically, throughout that original, the mitigations were pay your fees. Well, something's changed now. City council has altered and changed and done a tax-sharing agreement where up to like 90% of the first years of TOT taxes, an agreement, that's fine. But if a mitigation, original mitigation has been removed, something needs to backfill it in its place. Do you get that concept? That that was, the original mitigation was TOT taxes would pay for fire, police, schools, maintenance. Those are now changed by right, they can do that, but what takes its place? I did see one application for a higher roof. And the question is, now that's a new impact to the scenic Highway 50 corridor, aesthetics, part of SEQA. So are you going to be creating a new impact without analyzing it? To me, basically, it seemed like the building is a little bit too big for the, the parcel. In the tag architect document, it mentions multiple variances they would like, but I don't see an official application for those variances. They included reduced landscaping, parking lot shading, no bus stop, maybe a change in the off-site detention basin, the retaining walls, loading berths, signage, but where's the official application for a variance? I only see one for the roof. And the last traffic study, looks like it was probably done in 1996, with some new numbers in 2001 from Caltrans on Highway 50 traffic count. We're talking 15-something years ago, Highway 50 traffic hasn't been analyzed, but staff did show in one of the pages, 500 new vehicles on Highway 50 per day. So, but no mention of the study that they used to come to that number. I would recommend a, an addendum, at least a minimum for traffic impacts, traffic study. And the planning commission is authorized to request and require further study, more information, better data. You have the right. It's not staff, you have the right. Wasn't sure you knew that.
Can you summarize for us?
Yep.
Kind of time to finish up.
Therefore, shows that there are new or remaining impacts that are unmitigated or have been altered or removed. And therefore, these show that's a significant chance that planned mitigations are not sufficient enough to reduce environmental impacts to a less-than-significant level without at least an addendum of environmental review to clarify that all impacts will be reduced to a less-than-significant level. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jeremiah Motek. I live about 400 yards away from this hotel. Second-generation, longtime owner of seven-plus acres in the Pearl Orchard. I'd like to speak against the increase on the variance of this 55 height limit, because I'm a citizen too. But also, with the, former gentleman commented, there's no, there's not been environmental impact report. I live in an area called flood zone. The flood zone is right there. I'd like to know how they're going to fix our flood zone in Placerville on Smith Flat Road. It's, Hanktown Creek overflows. Lot of danger involved in cars. I don't expect 135 parking spaces. They're going to be driving on Smith Flat Road downtown and back to get to the hotel, especially if Broadway is closed, which is happening recently quite often. What about the snow impact? The snow impact is closing both roads. So we have a drainage system, we have a traffic problem, which I think on that environmental impact report was not updated, but they should. If you come here in, in December throughout the Apple Hill, you'll see the car traffic is unbelievable. But speaking about car traffic, we have pedestrian safety problems. One, there's no pedestrian crosswalk anywhere in front of the hotel, across the street from the hotel, on Jakeway to the parking area, as well as any handicap areas. Plus, if you drive at night, I challenge any of you to find Smith Flat Road. Try turning left. What more, in the daytime, when the cars are coming extremely fast, approximately 65 miles an hour, down Jackear Way, and we got to turn left onto Smith Flat Road because there's a lot of families with cars there, getting it more and more dangerous. I know this is not exactly how it's going to affect that, but the mitigation, we have to look at it. People walk on that Smith Flat Road at night, 11 o'clock at night. You don't think the persons from the hotel are going to be walking that road to get their exercise? They don't walk on the trail, they walk on that road. Many reasons why. And I expect to be a few deaths if this thing is built, because it's really hazardous. The lighting is very poor on that block, on that Jackear-Smith Flat intersections, both east and west. And I really don't understand why I have so many potholes to deal with on Smith Flat Road, when we're going to build a project like that, and you're going to ask your 135 guests to drive on Smith Flat, Smith Flat Road, but the place is full of potholes. It's a disaster. And the potholes are not small, they're getting bigger. Because I keep on calling it in, nothing happens. We have a problem, if you're not familiar with, the Hanktown Grange Hall in the parking lot area. If you look at the drainage, it's not draining. If you look at the flooding, it starts there all the way down. But with this project, what guarantee do I have that it's not going to flood more? There's not, there was no discussion on flooding, but I live in the flood zone. My property's in the flood zone. I didn't put it there, but it is there now. And this hotel's not in the flood, flood zone, so they're, they're not worried. But meanwhile, we still have the problem on Plac, on Smith Flat Road. What are you going to do about it? Trees, there are trees leaning at 45-degree angles on Jackear Way. They're going to fall and kill someone driving along, or injure somebody. Nothing's been done. How about, how about the brushes, the overgrown vegetation? Nothing is being maintained. And if you don't put pedestrian crosswalks there, I expect the people to get run over. Who are they going to sue? Probably the city.
Okay, with some trepidation, I got to ask you to sum, to sum up for us, please.
So, for the time being, I think you need to do an environmental impact report on the traffic safety issues in the, in the trail, on the roadway, across the streets, including the trail. Nothing was ever mentioned about that. I also think that if you look at it, the signal lights, there's no signal lights, it's dark, no designated turn for Smith Flat Road. I expect more accidents. So I'm not in favor, at this particular time, of increasing the height of that too. And the more of the 135 parking spaces, that area can't handle it. Smith Flat Road cannot handle this, this kind of traffic, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Yes, I'm Barry Bachelor. I live at 2696 Smith Flat School Road. And the creation of Jakeway up to Highway 50 has a very negative impact on my neighborhood. Ever since that road was constructed, it's been a pathway for the homeless into my neighborhood. They have set up all kinds of camps along the rail trail. Just in the past month, the school district had to disconnect the AC outlets that were in the exterior of the building at the Smith Flat School, because they were coming in there and charging their cellphones and staying there when the, the day women came in with their children, and they finally had to disconnect them. So we do have an ongoing problem. It peaked out about two years ago with the, the tent camp downtown. I think the population went sky-high. But we had as many as 10 guys living in one little trail off the rail trail. And of course, they're litter bugs, we know that. The pedestrian walkway from the north side of Highway 50 on Jakeway over to the proposed bicycle trail going down Broadway, there's no way that you can get over there without jaywalking. That was never, ever completed. And that's because they couldn't figure out what the hell to do. We have people that go from that side of Highway 50 over to Jakeway or on down that are in wheelchairs. And there's no way for them to get through underneath the freeway safely up to our side. And some of these guys are residents, they're not all the transients that we see, but we do have some transients. And down the hill, right past the motel, every night in the dark, you're going to find people walking, and they just disappear into the woodwork on a regular basis, and they're not, they're not our neighbors. So that's been a, a real headache. The, going into a four-story building, in this, in the town limits, there are two buildings, the Carey House and City Hall that are four stories, and they're in the business district, and they belong there. But a four-story building that's surrounded by residential communities, which is point view, that's all residential, there's some apartments up there, and in my neighborhood, in Smith Flat, is residential. So putting a four-story building with a parking into a neighborhood is going to have a lot of downsides to it. The traffic on Jakeway has not just doubled or tripled with automobiles, but we now get big rigs that we never had before. Because if they came down Jakeway, originally, they'd have to go down the gulch, and they never did, so they would go other ways. And they, if you're walking the rail trail and you come up to Jakeway, you have about three football lengths where there is no trail, and you got to be on the blacktop where the cars are. And if you don't keep your eye out, you're going to get smacked. And there's a lot of people that walk their animals there. So even though that's in the county, that needs to be dealt with, so you have some connection there. And I wouldn't be a bit surprised if, if we have meetings in this facility besides the residents that are staying, staying there, they'll probably end up parking in the rail trail parking lot.
I'd ask you to sum up, please.
And then they'll want to walk down there. My last comment is, this building, as I look at it right now, looks like a cell block down at Folsom Prison. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just add that one of those people you thought was in a wheelchair was probably me in my recumbent bicycle. You know, I get confused a lot. Anyone else?
Hi, good evening, Mike Cobus, resident of Camino, Placerville Drive property owner and business owner. I, I know a lot about this project. I came and spoke in favor of it, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, when Mackey was doing his stuff up there. I was glad to see it started, but then unfortunately, the economy, you know, took a dive, and I, I don't know everything that happened. But I know at the time, some of the things that, the concerns that we had back then, just going off of memory, is on Jakeway, you know, especially on the, I believe, the west side of Jakeway, there's a lot of standing water that sits in the gully there, in, you know, the trench just off the side of the road. And from what I remember at the time, is that they were going to figure out some way to mitigate that, either improve the, the drainage, because you can go there, you know, in June, July, and there's still standing water, a lot of times sitting in that, in that gulch there. And then another requirement of the project is that they were, from what I remember, he might know better because he was here, Mr. Calfee, but anyhow, is that they were planning on putting in some bikeways that would connect with the trail along Jakeway, possibly all the way up to Carson Road, you know, widening it a little bit. I think that would be a really good idea. And also, another thing that we had talked about is, there was the concern of people speeding on Jakeway. And so they, at this time, had determined they were going to put in some traffic calming effects, like trees, bushes, shrubs closer to the, the roadway to slow people down. I mean, it kind of didn't make a lot of sense to me, but that's what they said, is it'll slow people down because the sight distances are less and they just can't go as fast. So those are things that I would definitely like you guys to consider. Thank you very much for your time. Thanks, staff.
Thank you. Surely, there are more takers. Surely, there are more takers. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion and bring this back to the Commission for Discussion and Possible Action, and I suggest we take a five-minute break first. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting back to order, please. So, just to summarize, we've ended the public comment portion and we brought the item back to the Planning Commission for discussion and possible action. Any questions of staff as we get going here?
It is my understanding that they'll be coming back to this commission for a special use permit for signage, is that correct?
Should the applicant desire to put in pole signs or pylon signs, they would have to come back with an application for a conditional use permit. Staff fashioned it in a manner that they could come back to staff and get approval for both the east and the west entrance signs as proposed, as we proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Then, I have a question too, in that this is obviously, you know, a significant project for Placerville and the region. If perhaps staff could just instruct us a little bit on the, what happens if this project is denied tonight as presented versus what happens if it's approved?
If the project is denied, well then, the applicant or anybody else, for that matter, would be able to appeal your decision to the city council within 10 working days. If, calendar days. If you approve the project, someone else could appeal to the city council within 10 calendar days. Once those 10 calendar days pass, well then, the applicant is free to pull building permits and begin constructing where the last hotel left off.
Okay. And then, it seems to me there's another alternative in there, and that's if we either, neither deny or approve the project but requesting additional information.
Yes, the commission can request additional information if you feel that what's before you is inadequate to make an informed decision.
Thank you, thank you.
Other questions of staff or discussion, comment?
I actually have a question for you, Mr. Chairman. As the resident architect, your, yeah, well, I mean, your thoughts about the visual presentation of the project as proposed and acknowledging that a lot of specialized treatments are done, I think this is superior to the property in Folsom, no insult intended, but I do think what's being offered here is a much better version. But, I mean, are there other, are there other elements designed or otherwise you think that could be incorporated and should be possibly pursued? I mean, I think, not so, and not so much the visual aspect of the relationship with Highway 50. I do think after looking at some additional information, talking with staff, I do think that's going to be minimal if anything, so I don't have any concerns about that. Just in terms of the fitting in, and again, I think I'll hold out the Home Depot as just the gold standard project for accomplishing that balance of a big box corporate entity coming in and nestling, really nestling more than just a fit. It really, it really is nestled in the community and what might we consider, what could be done reasonably? And I won't limit it to you, of course, I'd be interested in hearing from all of my fellow commissioners. The landscaping plan helps me out a lot with that, I think particularly with the ponderosa pines, but they're going to take some time to develop, but they will. But other things that could happen. The entrance, and I'm not sure what you call that entrance, aside from an entrance, but the shapes of the, the shapes of the pillars, I don't, for some reason, do look, I don't know, whatever, but, so I'll leave it at that before I get myself in trouble, start there.
Okay, well, thank you. I do have a couple of comments. And this is this conundrum we face sometimes up here. It's like, you can be essentially in support of a project, but then you have the whole list of, well, what about this and what about that? And we know that every time we say that, we're heating up somebody's checkbook, which is kind of an issue, but I, as I was opening the package for the project, I was going, this is great, this can be a catalyst for helping revitalize the whole area, this will be super. And then I looked at, then I focused in on the fact that the building is turned inward. And I understand, as having designed hotel sites myself, how you end up there with kind of turning your back on the street, have your parking lot, your portico chair, and it's now just kind of its internal thing, but you present this huge wall to the facade, or facade to the public side of the building in this very sensitive rural area where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic. And you have the wall of the building, five feet essentially, I'm over dramatizing, and then a sidewalk, that's pretty, that's going to be kind of brutal in terms of relating to the pedestrian scale of that area. So, I was a little disappointed when I looked at that, but that's not a deal killer, I mean, you can't solve everything, when, obviously, when you're doing these kind of projects. And then I, it's just, I still really, quite honestly, haven't decided whether I'm in favor or not in favor of this project, but I've, things that are rolling around in my brain. I think the facade, this tree, you know, basically taking the corporate architecture and doing the best you can, à la the Home Depot project, to make it fit in, be contextual, is good, it's really practical, it's efficient, it's very efficient. And then, you know, we don't talk about art much anymore in public design, but I find it efficient and effective and completely uninspiring, and I don't mean that to offend anyone. It's just kind of small little pieces and I know the forces that work to make it be like this, so I'm a little disappointed there. I wish there was a way of, from a practical standpoint, without costing you guys a fortune, to spend a little more time on the pedestrian access and relationship of the building to pedestrian approaches and how it faces Jake Way. You know, I'm not suggesting you turn the building around or anything like that, because I know how you ended up where you are, but I see it completely turning its back, I mean, physically and, you know, literally on the neighborhood. And as we've heard tonight and that they've heard in other hearings, on the other projects or proposed for this site, the pedestrian access matters. So, I'll stop waxing uneloquently, and if anybody else has any comments?
We've talked about this project turning its back on Jake Way in the same light, it's putting what I would consider a decent elevation facing Highway 50. If we remember, just a couple of years ago, we took to task the, just across the freeway, a senior citizen home that looked like shoeboxes stacked, and this is a far cry from that. You guys talk about the good old days in the Home Depot, and if you look at Home Depot in Folsom or Rancho Cordova, it's the same thing, but this one up here has been reduced in scale. And I think that that, bringing the elements closer together is what you like about it. So, at this point, I would have loved to see elevations with some of the trees on there, I would have loved to see elevations where it actually shows what it's going to look like on the property. But all in all, I think that we've got a project here that will enhance our community.
One of the challenges, of course, for this commission is looking at what's presented to us and maybe kind of hypothesizing, you know, what will it look like in five years, 10 years, if the project goes through it? And to piggyback the last comment about the elevation, we don't have an elevation that shows landscaping, what it's going to look like if, when this landscaping goes in, and we certainly don't have an elevation showing what the landscape will look like in five to 10 years if it goes in. Previous project down off Placerville Drive actually theoretically dropped the property in amongst the trees so we could see what that would, what impact that would have and what visual draw that would have from Highway 50. Of course, that's, you know, quote unquote, the gateway to Placerville, and that was a prime property. This is kind of, going to be kind of the gateway to Placerville coming down, you know, westbound from 50, from Tahoe. So again, we're kind of looking at the black and white, the cut and dry, what are we going to start with, and not necessarily what is it going to be in, you know, in the five or 10 years? And what is it going to be with, you know, when it's dropped into that, the surrounding environment? So that's kind of a, I'm kind of, you know, whether I'm for or against the project, it's kind of, you know, the little details that we kind of want to take into consideration, but we can't assume are going to pan out the way we would like, so it is, it's a difficult situation, and there are some question marks certainly, but I think we need to plan for the worst and hope for the best and go from here. So, do appreciate the input, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say that, once they get into the plan permitting process, all of that sort of thing, I'm confident that staff will shepherd this along in a way that results in the most positive outcome for all concerned, and I think, I'm confident staff will have those, as you say, the way it looks on the box versus the way it's going to look in C2. I'm confident that staff has the capability to do that.
So, I'm not ready to let the chairman off the hook yet. You know, actually, in the discussion, I have to say, I am far less concerned about pedestrian access. When I mean pedestrian, I mean, I mean, walking access. To the extent that I can't envision that people are going to be walking to this hotel, I guess if they're going to stay at the hotel, they're generally going to drive to it, they might walk to the bike trail and go hiking along the bike trail, that might be the pedestrian component. But I'm generally not really seeing the real push for the pedestrian piece, I think people are going to be, I anticipate people using this facility, the height of, you know, Apple Hill, and right now, man, thank goodness, we got, we got the ski season, you know, rocking and roaring, and we have such a dire need for, you know, wine passport, et cetera, events that we have, and people need a place to stay, particularly in this part of town, that I really see that as kind of being the use. Now, the bike trail, and tying the bike trail in with the facility, I think is kind of important, because I really can see bike teams and bike clubs incorporating this facility as a possible layover, you know, for, on a longer, on a longer bent cross country, whatever, whatever those biker people do. But I want to go back to the architectural treatment. So there really isn't anything you don't think could be done, and I'm not saying money's no object, but anything else? What do you think, this, you know, this is basically satisfactory, given what the project is, and we'll soften it with landscape, and it's just going to fit and it's okay, is kind of where, from an architect's perspective, you think that's kind of where we're at?
Well, thank you so much for keeping me on the hook here. The part that concerns me, but it, just to keep people's blood pressures down, it's not to the point that the whole project's a failure. If I can step away from the mic for a minute? When I talk about pedestrians, if you're walking along here, you're, you know, maybe 10 feet, whatever that dimension is, from a giant building, that's a very uncomfortable place, the wall. And it puts up, it's a pretty severe wall that people be adjacent to, and that's the local pedestrians, and that's the dog walkers, the bicycle people and everything, so that was my concern. But, having said that, I recognize why it is what it is, in terms of trying to balance all of the forces that the designer has to deal with.
I was going to more visual, architectural visual treatments, not so much the scale of the project, not so much the size. You know, they got the decent stone treatments and the color palettes and all that, but is there anything else that you think could be incorporated?
Oh, keeping me on the hook, Izzy. The, I'm quite comfortable with the architectural treatment and scheme for this, don't misunderstand me, but scale matters, that's just a nicer way of saying size matters, in terms of this building, particularly in its context, but recognizing all the things we're trying to balance on the whole, it's a reasonable project, to me.
Well, I think there's a huge need for this project, and the evil of good is perfect. I'd be happy to support any motion.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we make findings 1A through 3C, except 4A 1.4. That was one of the ones that was revised on page 11, 12, and 13 of the staff report. Approved the site plan review and the variance as requested in accordance with conditions 4A 1 through 56, as modify, including the modifications to items 15, 36, and 57 on pages 13 through 23 of the staff report.
All right, second?
Discussion? Mr. Chairman, staff would like to make a comment, now that you have a first and a second. Staff would recommend the addition of one additional condition. We were reading through the staff report, and it was brought to my attention that we really didn't capture the environmental document that we talked a little bit about. So, staff is recommending that we add the following condition number 58, to read as follows. The project is subject to the mitigation measures contained in the previously adopted environmental document known as the Gateway Hotel and Gas Station Project Addendum to the mitigated negative declaration, City of Placerville, dated May 11th, 2004.
Okay, I can accept that amendment.
And that document is contained in its whole, in your staff, in your package.
He needs a second.
Second.
Yeah, you need to do it.
Agreed.
All right, discussion? I really wish I could vote against my own motion, because, and the reason why is that, you know, you got, you know, we're always having to move the line in terms of what we accept, in terms of good design, and in these kind of troubled times, we, you know, there's always the economics hanging over everybody's head, and it's just, I think that's just too bad. It's too bad that it's come to that, that we do have to accept the kind of the corporate solutions, and then we kind of gussy things up. But, be that as it may, our job is to look at what's the best for the whole community and all of our neighbors, and in that, in that spirit, I was willing to make the motion. So, I'll call the question, roll call, vote, please?
Member Lowry.
Aye.
Member List.
Aye.
Vice Chair Roby.
Aye.
Member Friend.
Aye.
Chair Wolf.
Aye.
Oh, we have to keep the meeting going. Thank you, and as the director mentioned, there are multiple avenues for appeals, if you have any questions about that, staff can answer it for you. We'll move on to item six, matters from planning commissioners.
So, Mr. Chairman, I actually have one, and it relates, I think, to the discussion we just had, and this isn't the first time that this has come up, where we wished we had had other elevations that really reflect the project as closely as you can come to how it's actually going to look. And so, I'm wondering, is this something that this body could request of and memorialize in staff's approach to these projects, particularly along Highway 50 scenic corridor and other high visual areas, where you know that this body is going to want to see some elevations that are done this way, and if that just became a standard practice, is that, is that possible? I'd probably defer to the city planner, Mr. Painter, but just in brief, our submittal requirements don't require the five to 10-year future view of what a project, for example, the previous project you just completed, there's no requirement for the applicant to submit then elevations that would show the building in context with mature vegetation in five to 10 years. They are required to submit a landscaping plan, they were required to show that the shading requirement would provide for 50% shading or more within 15 years, and they've done that. So their submittals show that they're going to meet the landscaping requirements, show they're going to provide for the shading of the parking lot, but as far as is actually doing elevations like an artist's rendition that shows was what it's going to look like together with the landscaping, we don't have that requirement, but it's something we can look at, and with that, I'd refer to Mr. Painter. So, we could, it would be within the city's discretion to make that requirement, and I'm thinking, I could be wrong, but I'm thinking it's something that's not terribly onerous, particularly given the software that's available now, and the graphic capabilities available now, I have to...
If the gentleman will yield.
The gentleman's done.
The, it just occurs to me that, you know, three-dimensional visualization is so much, is so much easier and more affordable and easier to accomplish than it was even five years ago. You know, you just need the sketch-up program and a 12-year-old, and you can, within a few hours, you can do a reasonably good 3D representation of just about any kind of project, which is what happened in the project at the other end of town that we all like so much. I think it would be reasonable to have a discussion about changing the city's requirement, that we get some 3D visualization of the application. I think the long-term views of a project, that's a pretty slippery slope, but in terms of answering this question of what does it look like from Highway 50, and it would also answer, what does it look like from Jake Way Road when you're standing four feet away from the building? You know, that kind of requirement to have the 3D presentation, I think is something we should consider, and maybe staff could look into, and...
And those would be the worst-case scenario, because the vegetation hasn't grown up yet. You would go, okay, when we...
What you're going to look at the building?
When we plop it in, it's going to look like this, but then we got the landscaping, it'll get even better, and it gives us an idea, so, yeah.
Yeah, I would just add that, just because I'm a fan of radio towers, the application that used for the Verizon site, you know, they, I call it, they kind of green-screened it in, so, you know, this is what the tower's going to look like, you know, from the ANW store, and this is what the tower's going to look like from across the street. And so, you know, maybe short of making it a requirement, if someone wants to create a very persuasive package, that giving people the ability to visualize how it is, you know, upon completion in C2, you know, might get some of us, because, kind of like, we're put in the role of being amateur radiologists here sometimes, because we're supposed to take, you know, a plan and an elevation in a number two pencil, I exaggerate, but not much, and make a decision that has some long-term implications. Okay, matters from staff, moving along?
Yeah, a couple of things. The most recent city council meeting was canceled due to weather, and so items that previously had come before you are, will now be heard on the 14th, excuse me, the 24th of this month, which is next week. Also, I mentioned at the last meeting, and there will be some items on the 14th of February at city council, one being, we hope is the final resolution for the 618 Main Street project, which is a long-going, ongoing and long, long-drawn-out resolution there. We hope to get that done. There is other items related to housing opportunity overlay, which will be heard on that night. For instance, specifically next week, the item that you last heard on the 3rd will be heard at the city council on the 24th related to the housing opportunity overlay project the city initiated, request to change the zoning land use designation for the site at Cold Springs Road, Middletown Road, and Placerville Drive. One other item, on the 7th, we will have a planning commission meeting. I do have an item that will come before you, it will be a historic district review for some window changeouts. Anything more from other staff members to announce? No? Okay, back to you, Chair.
I just want, I want to thank staff for the accuracy capturing the motion that was made for the housing opportunity overlay. I think you did a very good job with that, thanks, Andrew.
Anything else? I assume we have a consensus to adjourn, thank you.